Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. Welcome to the 5:30 City Council Meeting of March 20th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. I think we have some Road Runners in the House. Is that correct? Welcome, Bakersfield College Renegades. Thank you all for being here. How many do we have? No, we have a few. Oh, we have a lot of Renegades. Okay, so Professor Holmes and Kim, they will be happy. And then we also are privileged, and I think they're coming in right now, to have the young Assembly Members from Assemblyman Rudy Solis's office. And I see Representative Athena Scapinakis leading them in. So, welcome. We're very glad to have you here today, and thank you for engaging in the civic process. We now have the privilege of having Minister Albert Watkins of Compassion Christian lead us in the invocation. We appreciate Compassion Christians' involvement in our community, and I know in the summer you host many different educational programs for youth who are going through challenges. Following the invocation, we will have Jonathan Parham, who is a senior at Frontier High School, to lead us in the pledge. Jonathan has a 3.96 GPA. He's captain of the varsity swim team. He plays trumpet for the Marching Titans and is the trumpet section leader for the jazz band. And he is on his way to West Point. So, congratulations on that. We're looking forward, make sure that you come back and serve us, but thank you for your willingness to go that route and serve our country. So, at this time, would you all please stand while Minister Watkins leads us in the invocation.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Lord, we just thank you for today, for protecting us and watching over us and keeping us safe all throughout the day. Lord, as we come together as a family, a community, and a city, Lord, we thank you for our mayor tonight, oh God, continue to give her insight and wisdom to be able to do her job unto you, Lord. Father, we thank you for our city councilmen and women that are on, over each ward, oh Lord. Father, we thank you for unity between those city councilmen, oh God, and as we come together today, oh Lord, we just want to thank you for all the leaders in this city, oh God. We thank you for the growth that we've had over the years, oh Lord. We thank you that you give them insight, oh God, to new constructions and new roads and new buildings, oh God, and all the amendments and presentations that will go forth tonight, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, that you lead us and guide us, direct us, oh God, order our paths, oh God. We know that Bakersfield is a great city, Lord, and we thank you for it, oh God. Father, we thank you for all the leaders that are here tonight, oh God, and as we come together on one accord, Lord, and speak up for our city and our amendments, Lord, we just thank you that you be in the midst, Father, that everything will be done decently and orderly tonight, oh God. Father, we thank you for the young people, oh God, that are here, oh God, that are representing our city, that will go out and do great, great exports in their lives, oh God. Father, we thank you right now, Father, as we come to this meeting and we continue to give you praise and continue to give you honor for all that you're doing in our city, Lord. Father, we just thank you right now, Lord, and we thank you for the public statements that are going to go forth. We thank you for our universities, CSUB, oh God, and Bakersfield College, oh God, and all the other universities that are represented here tonight, Lord, we thank you for them, oh God. Father, and we just want to just give you honor, that everything that we do tonight, oh God, will be pleasing in your sight, and that we do all our work unto you, Lord. We thank you right now. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Minister. Jonathan?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and you may be seated. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation presented to the Gandhi Celebration Committee and the Naina and Ravi Patel Foundation declaring Peace and Nonviolence Day in Bakersfield on March 30th, 2019.
We have an opportunity tonight to have four different presentations, so I am honored to have all of you here. Come on up, purple shirts. Gandhi has said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." And I am so glad that we have a group here who wishes to be the change, and it's a group that cares about peace in this world where we have so much discord and turbulence. There's a group here who is choosing to highlight peace, and so it's my honor today to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the Gandhi Celebration Committee and the Ravi and Naina Patel Foundation are commemorating Mahatma Gandhi's 150th birthday anniversary with a series of local celebrations, and whereas the Gandhi Celebration Committee and the Foundation have reserved March 30th as Festival of Peace and Nonviolence March at Don Hart Park at CSUB, and whereas the Festival of Peace and Nonviolence March will promote Gandhi's philosophy of peace, truth, and nonviolence, and the positive effects it can have on the citizens of Bakersfield, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the philosophy of truth, peace, and nonviolence, and its positive effects, and how it can improve discourse, interaction with each other in our community as a whole, and whereas the Gandhi Celebration Committee and the Foundation are providing a vital public service to our community. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 30th, 2019, as Peace and Nonviolence Day in our city, and call upon all citizens and all patriotic civic and community organizations to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which the residents of Bakersfield and Kern County may join in recognizing and celebrating peace, truth, and nonviolence. And it's my honor to be able to present this today. And accepting today will be from the Foundation. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes. I'm Amr Patel. Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you to the Bakersfield City Council for the proclamation of March 30th as the Day of Peace and Nonviolence. I'm proud to announce the first annual festival and march for peace of nonviolence on that day, Saturday, March 30th, at 9:30 AM, on behalf of the Gandhi Celebration Committee. We'll have an event that day which will include a march, live music, food trucks, as well as a speech by Aisha Mason. Additionally, we will, the event will include all ages, so feel free to bring the whole family. And you can get more information by visiting our website at facebook.com/tribute to Gandhi. Thank you so much, and hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
A proclamation to Chad Provenzal, Assistant Principal of the Kern High School District's Bakersfield Adult School, declaring Adult Education Week in Bakersfield during the week of April 8th, 2019.
Welcome. Where would we be without adult education? It's always a thrill for me when I get to visit on campus, to see eager adults really wanting to be in school. Sometimes it's a little different from kids who don't really want to be there. Adults, they want to be there, and you can see how much all of you pour into their lives. And so, it is always my joy to be able to celebrate this day. There are nearly 36 million adults in the U.S. struggling with their basic academic skills, and it makes it so difficult for them to function, but we're making a difference here in Bakersfield. So, it is my honor to be able to present this proclamation, whereas the state of California will observe Adult Education Week, April 8th through April 12th, and the Kern High School District, along with the Board of Trustees, acknowledges that the Bakersfield Adult School serves the changing economic and cultural needs of a vigorous, expanding community, and whereas the Bakersfield Adult School prepares over, ready for this, 10,000, 10,000 students to meet academic, personal, and professional goals by enrolling in one or more of the diploma GEDs, English as a Second Language Business and Health Career Programs, and whereas the Bakersfield Adult School prepares adults to successfully complete the process to become new U.S. citizens, and whereas in 2018, 281 adults received high school diplomas, 71 adults earned GEDs, 13 adults graduated from the two-year vocational nurse program, and 30, over 3,300 adults at Bakersfield Adult School and the Lardo Detention Facility completed one or more career technical education programs. And whereas the Bakersfield Adult School provides programs especially designed for older adults and the disabled population, and whereas the Bakersfield Adult School provides for the unique needs of individuals in a diverse population. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby recognize Adult Education Week in our city and salute the administration, teachers, and students of the Bakersfield Adult School, and honor each one of them for their efforts and accomplishments. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Congratulations, and the mic is all yours.
Thank you. On behalf of the Kern High School District and the Bakersfield Adult School, we'd like to thank the City Council, and in particular, we'd also like to thank Mayor Go, who's, I know she's, like her predecessor, has placed a lot of importance on adult education. Mayor Go's even, you know, came out and sat on our advisory boards and really put her time in, not just her words, to adult education, so we'd just like to thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamation to Mike and Plummer, Member of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County, declaring National Boys and Girls Club Week in Bakersfield during the week of April 8th, 2019.
This is another one of my favorites, and I get to hang out at the Boys and Girls Club a lot. But imagine not having the Boys and Girls Club. I can't imagine not having the Boys and Girls Club in our community. Across America, the clubs serve nearly 4 million children annually, and here, you serve a lot through your 45 clubs. So, it is my honor to be able to present this proclamation, whereas the young people of Bakersfield are tomorrow's leaders, and many young people need professional youth services to guide them so they may reach their full potential. And whereas the 45 Boys and Girls Clubs in Bakersfield provide services to almost 5,000, 5,000 young people annually promoting academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship, and whereas Boys and Girls Clubs in our city help to ensure that our young people are occupied by offering them a safe and supportive refuge, one that provides quality programs, and whereas the Boys and Girls Clubs in Bakersfield will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week in 2019, along with 4,000 clubs and more than 2 million young people nationwide. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim April 8th through April 12th, 2019, as Boys and Girls Club Week in our city, and call upon all of our citizens to join in recognizing and condemning the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County for providing comprehensive and effective services to the young people of our community. It's my honor to be able to present this to you. Both of you come up. Plummer, thank you so much. And both of you feel free to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you to the City Council for this proclamation. I'm Mike and Plummer. I am the Executive Director of the Kern County Builders Exchange, but today I'm a very proud member of the Board of Directors of the Boys and Girls Club of Bakersfield. And, you know, it's real easy for us to stand up here and say all the great things that the Boys and Girls Club does, but it makes a real impact when you see it for yourself. So, during this April 8th through 12th, we would love to have an open-door invitation at your convenience for you guys to see for yourselves the impact that Zane Smith and his staff have on the children of the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, it's absolutely remarkable when you get to see it in person, so we hope that you will join us.
Madam Clerk?
A proclamation to Ross and Cindy Huguee of the American Red Cross Central California Region, declaring Red Cross Month in Bakersfield during March 2019.
There they are. Come on up. You know, Cindy, oftentimes when I see you, you are just getting on a plane to go to a disaster. It never ends. And then I see you again, and you're about to take off for another one. And imagine the 244 families locally if they hadn't had your help. We are so grateful to have the Red Cross. We're so grateful for your commitment, your dedication to serve under the most difficult circumstances. And so, it is my honor today to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the American Red Cross was established in 1881 as a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, impartiality, and independence to provide services to those in need. And whereas today, the American Red Cross is one of the largest humanitarian organizations in the world and delivers its mission every day, every day to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and whereas every year, the American Red Cross responds to an average of more than 62,000 disasters across our country, from small home fires to devastating massive disasters. And whereas the Kern County Chapter assisted with 244 local families during times of disaster in the past year alone, and helped save lives through the home fire campaign which launched in October 2014, and has since worked with community partners to install over 6,000 smoke alarms, making over 2,300 households safer. And whereas Red Cross volunteers and donors give their time and resources to members of their community by delivering help, but not only help, hope during a disaster. And whereas the American Red Cross shelters, feeds, and provides emotional support to victims of disasters, supplies approximately 40% of the nation's blood, teaches skills that save lives, provides international humanitarian aid, and supports military members and their families. Now, therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as Red Cross Month in our city, and encourage all residents to support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Thank you, Cindy and team, so much for your dedication to those who are facing the greatest challenges.
Thank you very much. Come on up here. I'd like to thank Mayor Go and the Council for this wonderful proclamation. As a volunteer, it's my privilege to be able to serve my city and beyond. With me today, I have Carolyn, our board member, Megan, as our disaster program director who runs everything here locally, and Mark Smith is a volunteer and a mayor corps member. I can't tell you the hours that they put in, along with myself and other volunteers. It is a privilege. We do go out at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. In fact, we had a team out last night serving a family that had a fire. Approximately three families a week locally in the City of Bakersfield are served by the Red Cross. It is our privilege to be able to help those in need, and we will continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. So, now, may we have the first public speaker, please, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Go, we've received two public speaker cards, both on separate subjects. The first public speaker of the evening is Michael Turnipseed regarding Measure N.
You are becoming a regular attendee with a regular chair.
Madam Mayor, it's nice to be here. When you sign up for duty, though, you have to be here to watch what goes on. I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association, and because of your stringent three-minute time limits, I have to put more and more stuff in writing. I'm learning that, by the way. We supported Measure N because we requested four things. Two of them have been completed. The committee's been appointed, and it's been nominated, we got to nominate somebody who got appointed. Now, hearings are going on, items are being discussed. Here's the list, like, the money's already been spent. I haven't heard from the council yet on goals and objectives, but I understand you're going to take that up next month, which is a good thing, because the goals and objectives of the city are set by you, the council, and what's best for your wards, and we can never forget that. It is the people that are paying the taxes that are expected to seeing measurable outcomes from the spending of this money. Talk is talk. Action is action. So, I want to make sure tonight, I've given you, and I want to make sure, because I haven't heard if the public's going to get to present or not, projects, so I'm giving you the short version of some of the things we'd like to see addressed. Lighting in the darkest neighborhoods. We figure there are thousands and thousands of streetlights that don't exist, yet there's money being proposed to be spent to replace existing lights. We think it's more important to put lights in where there are no lights. And there's never anything about an urban trail, more walking opportunities, a lot of things that are on that are in my written comments there. But I'm here tonight because I won't be, I'll be in Sacramento next week at the Cal Tax Annual Meeting, and we're glad to hear that you're going to be discussing goals and objectives in April. And I just want to remind you that one of the most important things in your goals and objectives is adopting measurable outcomes for every dollar you spend. We know the inputs. That's the $58 million you're going to get from the taxpayers. We're seeing a list of the outputs. You're hiring people, you're buying equipment, you're putting money in regional parks. Don't forget the local parks. Just because you're having a cleanup, go around and be on-call to clean them up, that's not investing in equipment and toys and water facilities and everything that local parks need in this town. They're in desperate need. We want to see measurable results, and I know in working with your outcomes and your goals and output, goals and objectives for the new budget, we will see many of those outcomes take place. Thank you very much. 19 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed.
By the way, thank you for your resolution opposing the severance tax.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
The final speaker this evening is Belen Delgado regarding Martin Luther King's celebration.
Welcome, Mr. Delgado.
Good afternoon. My name is Belen Delgado, and I'm here with the Dolores Huerta Foundation Youth and Family Civic Engagement Program, but I'm also here as a student from West High. In January, the nation honored Dr. Martin Luther King in various ways. On April 4th, we recognized the day Dr. King was murdered. I am here as a member of not only the foundation, but also as youth in the community, to ask the City of Bakersfield to establish a Martin Luther King Unity Committee. Sorry. The City of Fresno sponsors and oversees the Martin Luther King Unity Committee that organizes an annual three-day celebration that has been open to the public for the last 35 years. The celebration starts with a march with hundreds of people and students of all backgrounds, and ends with a singing, dancing, and art celebration at the Fresno Memorial Auditorium. We would like to see the City of Bakersfield organize a similar celebration here in Bakersfield to honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We would be happy to sit on the committee and provide suggestions for our celebration here in the City of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Delgado, for your comments. If I can ask staff to reach out to Ms. Delgado about her ideas and see if we can coordinate with the existing Dr. King committees in the community and how that might complement the efforts that currently are underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8T for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? Does any council member wish to remove a consent item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8T, as in Tom, along with the noted agenda correction by the city clerk.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And notice, our technology worked. Last time, actually, we had a little glitch, but as it turns out, it was not an internal fault. It was a system-wide failure. So, good job. Thank you, tech team. And now, next item, please.
Under hearings... Under hearings, Mayor, I just want to announce that we've received a memorandum regarding item 10A, transmitting corrected pages of the master fee schedule.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed fifteen minutes. It's fifteen minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the two TV screens behind me which indicates fifteen minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After fourteen minutes, a yellow light will come on, and at the end of fifteen minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. And at that point, please end your statements quickly. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there is approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict fifteen-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of the previous speakers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Public hearing to consider resolution adopting fees pursuant to the cost recovery system.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Goh, members of council, Nelson Smith, Finance Director. State law requires the city hold a public hearing anytime that we're considering either raising fees or adding new fees to the fee schedule. The municipal code requires that staff complete a full review of the fees and charges every two years and bring those findings and information to the council for your review. The last full review of the fees was completed June 2017. Each city department completes a full review of their fees and they recommend either increases or decreases to realign their fees with the actual cost of providing the service. Most of the fees are minor, most of the fee changes are minor in nature and in line with inflation of roughly three percent a year. There are twelve fees which are highlighted in the administrative report that fall outside of the general inflation category. I'd like to specifically address a couple of those. The first is the DUI towing charge, which is D-71 in the schedule. Review of this fee identified an additional two hours of officer's time that was not previously included in the fee. So the police department is proposing to increase the fee by one hundred fourteen dollars, taking the fee from one hundred seventy to two hundred and eighty-four dollars to recover the staff time involved in this process. The memo that you received this evening identifies a clerical error that was made on the schedule that's in the agenda packet where the one hundred and fourteen dollar increase was accidentally input on the line above the DUI towing charge. The corrected sheet, which is page sixteen of the schedule, is attached to the memo you have. The other item is the recreational center rentals for Martin Luther King, Silver Creek, Saunders, and Millhouse. The Parks Department is recommending that all of the fees for rental of these facilities be raised for nonprofit groups up to the amount that are currently being charged for the private use groups. The proposed increases range from one to twenty-nine dollars. The department believes this change will not only be easier to administer, but it may generate some additional revenue and will be more legally defensible. The private use rental rates are not proposed to change. Again, due to a clerical oversight, the schedule in the agenda packet did not accurately reflect the proposed changes, and the pages attached to your memo, which are pages eighteen and nineteen of the fee schedule, are the corrected version of the fee for this category.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? May I see your hands? Seeing none, how many people would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action.
Motion to adopt resolution.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under reports, we have fiscal year 2018, 2019 mid-year budget review.
Thank you. Mr. Smith again.
Nelson Smith, Finance Director, thank you for your patience. I'll be providing a mid-year budget review for the general fund. When I said mid-year, I mean, really mean at a current point in time, so this actually, these numbers actually run through the end of February, so we're about two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year. This first page shows some of our larger revenue sources, and the first column on the left shows the revenue definition. The first set of numbers show the fiscal year budget or estimated revenues. This next column is the actual revenues collected to date, which is about two-thirds of the way through the year. And then the next column is the percent of budget collected, and then there's some notes at the bottom that are referenced. So as you can see, the first line, current secured property taxes, we've collected about fifty-six percent of revenue. On the surface, that would appear to be a little bit under, but the way our tax revenues come in, it's right on target. We get some money in December, some more money in April, and so being less than sixty-seven percent is not, is not a problem in this situation. On sales taxes, again, the fifty-seven percent appears to be less than two-thirds of the way through, but sales tax revenues lag in collections throughout the fiscal year and they actually get made up after June 30th. And so the money is run about two months behind, so again, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule and the revenues are projecting above budget estimates. And you look at the business license line, you know, ninety-six percent, that looks like a great number, but most of our business license revenues comes in during July and August, and so we don't expect a lot of, a lot more money to come in this fiscal year. So again, we're pretty much on line. Here we have some other revenue streams, intergovernmental revenues, a little bit ahead of sixty-seven percent. Charges for services are pretty close to target. Fines and assessments are right on, right on target, and miscellaneous revenues are a little bit above estimates. On the expenditure side, now we have departmental names on the left-hand side. The first column again is the annual budget for that department. The next column are the actual cost to date. Again, we're two-thirds of the way through the year. We have outstanding encumbrances, which are purchase orders and contracts that are under, under contract but have not finished being paid yet, and then the remaining balance. So on the right-hand side, the percent of budget remaining, we're looking for some, we're numbers thirty-three percent or above. That would be a positive outcome. And as you can see, the mayor's budget, legal services, city clerk, executive branch, finance, we're all above thirty-three percent remaining budget, so we all have, we're all going to have a little bit of savings left over probably. Here we have police and fire. Again, we're looking for a target that's at least thirty-three percent or above, and both of those are in line with, with our budget estimates. Public works, parks recreation, again, both are above the, the target of at this, at this point in the fiscal year. And planning and building, economic development, planning and building are above estimates. Economic development, their, their budget is project-driven, and they've, so it's not necessarily a linear process throughout the year, so they've, their expenses appear to be higher, but it's only because they've completed a larger percentage of the project at this point in the fiscal year. So overall, everything looks fine at this point. There's no areas of concern either on the revenue or the expense side. And I'd like to turn it over to Chris Hewat now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Councilmembers, Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. So following Mr. Smith's presentations, there are two minor adjustments we would like to propose to you this evening based upon some organizational changes that we've seen and are anticipating. So with that, I will start first in the Public Works Department. The proposal before you, and one of the items we're asking your approval for this evening is the addition of two construction inspector positions. These are fee-supported positions that review various components of development, so whether that's utilities, tracks, parcel maps, street permit, traffic control plans. They're really a crucial part of that process. And as I will show you in just a minute, we're experiencing some delays in inspection times above and beyond our objectives that the department sets for itself. And so therefore, some of these delays in getting inspections done are delaying unfortunately residential and commercial projects. So right now, we have four inspectors that do this work regularly for the entire city. And that was compared, just for comparison purposes, I think prior to the downturn, there were ten that were responsible for this type of work throughout the city. So with the economy and development showing some stability for some time now, we've seen those inspection times creep up and the demand increase. So as I talked about, we've seen about actually a sixty percent increase in monthly inspections, just raw numbers, since June of 2017. The goal is to get out and do an inspection on average forty-eight hours after the request is made. We're seeing times that can take up to fourteen days today. The developers do have an option to use on-call inspectors, meaning the city has contracted with engineering firms that do this type of work on an on-call basis. It does mean that the developers are paying for that enhanced service, so to speak. But with this proposal, Mr. Fiddler and his crew believe the addition of two inspectors at this point in time is prudent and will significantly reduce the time that it takes currently to do those inspections. The second package of adjustments is in the Human Resources Division. The proposal this evening is to add one supervisor and one analyst position. Seen a significant percentage increase in the number of recruitments over the past three years, close to sixty percent. And then just again, the raw number, we are anticipating both through Measure N as well as our normal attrition rate to see the number of recruitments continue to, to remain at the pace that they're at and then increase likely after July 1st. And of course, the recruitment process for public agencies is a little bit more complex and a little bit more involved in the, in the public, in the private sector. So the work that our analysts and our supervisors and our HR staff is doing is, has increased over the last, again, several years. So we're looking to onboard these two positions. In the current fiscal year, the intent is, and you'll see later in the process for the measure, that these positions are proposed to be a part of the, the service, support services group for the measure. So these positions, we would add them in the general fund this year is what's being proposed and make that transition next year to support largely the hiring that will be done and anticipated under the measure. So there are several items that the staff is asking the council to consider and approve this evening related to, to these items. It is the appropriation of funds for the positions. Again, the inspector positions are fee-supported. Again, the revenues that are paid for those services will be, will support those positions. And then we are asking for a nominal amount of general fund balance for the remainder of the fiscal year for the two HR positions, again, with the intent to transfer those to the measure after July 1. So with that, I'm available for questions. If you had questions about the earlier component of the presentation, Mr. Smith and others are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Colleagues, any comments? Councilmember Freeman.
If I could just expand a little bit, this relates a little bit to what Mr. Turnipseed was, was requesting was, if when you make the request for additional funds and personnel, which we'll be doing a lot of with Measure N, if you can, along these lines, and I think you could do even more, describe what the outcome will be. Part of what he's getting at, you know, if we add two people, two personnel, it ought to go on to allow us to meet these recruitment goals of forty-three police, twenty-five this year, something that explains this is what we will do with the money in a concrete way. Because that sort of completes the loop on our understanding, the results that Mr. Turnipseed is asking about, well, you know, what, if we grant you this, what will you do? What will change? What will get better? And a lot of this is just presentation and sort of finishing the discussion, closing the loop on it. So you did a pretty good job on this. I think we could do even better by finishing if, you know, if we hire two new inspectors, we will eliminate hundred percent of delays or fifty percent of delays, just something a little more concrete that we will know after we make the expenditure of this new investment, what will be the result? What will we get? And if you can apply that through all of these Measure N requests, if we, you know, if we hire forty-three police officers, I don't know what the outputs are, but you might say, you know, burglaries will be reduced by ten percent, or homicides will go down, or response times will be down by the, something that shows the result so we can better understand, aha, okay, we make this investment and this is what we will get out of it. And as you move through your Measure N proposals and budget proposals, if you'd sort of add that thought, it will make it easier for the council, I think easier for the Measure N committee to say, you know, we're going to invest three million in the convention center to rehab all these things, and that will result in five more events, or something that shows this is what the result will be.
Councilmember Freeman, we have a return on investment section of the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure proposals, which do exactly that. It is the last section of that inch-and-a-half-thick document that you were sent out about a week and a half ago. We will be going over it in conjunction with the budget issues in future months.
Good. My, my comments really apply to everything we request, but I believe that's what Mr. Turnipseed was getting at, was the request that we show concretely what the result of the new expenditures will be, so everybody can understand this is what we get for the money, and that's what the public was expecting. It just, it's almost just completing your thought. So, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff on the construction inspectors. A forty-eight-hour goal is great, fourteen days is not good at all. And we had just talked a week or so ago with the Planning and Development Committee how, you know, we want to be business-friendly, we want to provide services in order to keep business moving as fast as they can, and this is one of the ways. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar comment as Councilmember Smith. Wanted to thank staff for taking this action. My question was, so before the economic downturn, we had ten inspectors, and that was reduced to four, which is where we are currently. We will add two, the goal is forty-eight hours. Will we be able to meet that goal? How confident are we with the additional two inspectors that we will in fact meet that goal?
I will defer to Nick Fiddler for more information on that.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, we are proposing two for this current fiscal year to meet that demand. We are going to continue to analyze the, the amount of workload and see if we need to add a third as well. We also are able to use on-call consultants for some of the work as well to keep up with demand. But we're seeing an influx of not only development, but also for street permits, like Mr. Hewat has mentioned, through the small cell activity. For instance, Verizon Wireless is putting almost two-hundred miles of conduit in the ground through various locations throughout the city. So we've tried to utilize some consultants to help manage that workload. But yeah, our goal is to meet that forty-eight-hour response time with our own staff, and as we need to, we'll bring on the consultants, and then we And then we see that we're continually using the consultants, then we will come back and request an additional staff member as we evaluate it moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, staff, to City Manager's Office for bringing on extra HR personnel. You know, we talk about hiring 100 new police officers, but we're not going to get one police officer on the street unless we get him through the very arduous process and all post requirements, and that can't be done without HR. So thanks again.
Colleagues, anyone else?
Make a motion to accept the mid-year report, approval of the four new positions and appropriation transfer of funds.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Also under reports, fiscal year 2018-19 Bakersfield Public Safety and Vital Services Measure, proposed allocations.
Mr. Tandy.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, you have five recommendations before you this evening, as articulated on the agenda. Three of them are appropriating monies for the initial phases that we see as being necessary to prepare for this measure's enactment. And then two of them relate to waiving normal bidding requirements and certain contract documents to initiate getting the new police training center retrofitted, hopefully in time for the academy. No, I'll retract that, in time for the academy, which begins this August. The budget this year is unique and different, so let me talk about that for a minute. Normally, on the first meeting in May, you get an overview of the total budget from the City Manager's Office, and you spend the next two months in a variety of sessions with multiple items on your regulars and then a couple of special meetings that you go over the budget. That will all take place again this year, but what has been added is the new steps relative to the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure and us going before the Oversight Committee. We've had two sessions with the Oversight Committee. We have two more scheduled, and we will then take the product of the proposals on the measure and merge them with the regular budget proposals and present you with the budget package, which consists of both of those aggregated, but they'll be separable. So in essence, you'll be able to peel back a page and look only at Measure N. When you wish to do that, you'll see them combined so that they're within the context of the overall when you wish to do that. So I promise it will not be as boring and dry as the last several years when we stand up and say we don't have enough money and we're not doing anything other than with grants and so on. In fact, we will be doing a great deal. The measure goes into effect to the taxpayer on April 1st of 2019. And the initial implementation consists of one quarter sales tax allocation, which under our accounting system is credited to the 1819 year, and then, of course, four quarters for the first full year in 1920. We talked closely during the measure's outreach program about $50 million. Since that was set over a year, year and a half ago, the trend in the sales tax receipts has gone up, and the legislature actually did something positive and closed one loophole on, that allowed for people to escape taxation in certain instances. And so the new projection for a full fiscal year is $58 billion. There were 13 priorities that were identified in the ballot measure, and all of the Measure N priorities are supposed to correspond to one or more of those. We will talk about them next. And again, all of this will be new and innovative and different, and a much bolder approach to addressing some serious issues in the community than we have been able to do in the recent past. The 13 priorities articulated in the ballot measure, seven of them are actually police-related. Improved response times, reduce crimes, increase neighborhood police patrols, improved response to assaults and burglaries, maintain and improve and rapid response to gang violence, investigating and proactively preventing property crimes, burglaries and vehicle thefts, keeping public areas safe and clean, strengthening capacity of special enforcement unit, and expanding the school officer program. Then we have the other programs, which include maintaining a fully-staffed and equipped Class II-rated fire department, reducing homelessness, and of course, new information was revealed within the last few days on the homeless count, which is up, 46% up last year, 50% up this year from the higher number, probably a representation that in the previous years there was undercounting, but certainly a problem which continues to grow. And we have some bold actions to recommend to you to take to assist in dealing with that problem. Addressing the fiscal stability of the city, creating jobs through economic development, business retention, attraction and workforce development, enhancing amenities throughout the community to improve the quality of life and attract visitors, and enhancing neighborhoods' traditional code enforcement, and improved park maintenance. The materials being presented to the Oversight Committee list one or more of these in advance of articulating the expense category, because one of the tasks of that committee, in accordance with the ballot, was to validate or certify that the proposed expenditures were in accordance with the ballot measure prioritization. To give you the context of the overall on a preliminary basis, so that you see how that relates to the three spending proposals that are being recommended early, the overall plan will result or proposes to result in the hiring of 126 new positions, 43 sworn in the police department, and 25 civilian, with a three-year plan to have 100 sworn added to the department and a corresponding necessary number of civilians. 11 fire department positions in the first year, followed by, I believe, 12 the second year. Creation of two rapid response teams, one to deal with parks, litter, debris, the constant problem we have with people tearing up the parks, the toilets, the grass, playground equipment, burning things, it is a daily problem. And we're proposing a rapid response team. What happens now is that the regular parks crews that work in Ward 6 or Ward 2 are pulled off their regular duties in order to address these issues. They're almost constant, so we have disruptions of the schedules. The rapid response team will run seven days a week. It will address these issues and allow those crews to continue their regular work within the districts. It is modeled, both of these proposals are modeled after our graffiti abatement program, which was developed several years ago and which has been remarkably effective in reducing how long graffiti is out there by running seven days a week with advanced quality equipment, having it on the city app so people can take a photo and send in a geocoded complaint, and we respond directly. Homelessness is the second one, and every one of you gives me homelessness, debris, litter, shopping cart complaints, sometimes in the fronts of businesses, sometimes in our parks, sometimes in our sumps, all over really. And we do big gear-ups in getting a multi-departmental function to do periodic, large-scale cleanups. We're going to go here, if this is approved eventually by the council, to a seven-day a week, again, on a city app. You send in the photo, if the camp is abandoned, we clean it up there and there. If it's a circumstance that requires notice and an option for that homeless person to get their belongings stored, we'll at least post it, and so that in the minimum time required by law, we return to do the cleanup. And we think this will have the potential to shorten the duration of these unsightly and uncomfortable, unbusinesslike, unresidential enjoyment of property-like circumstances that we have all over town. Economic development, since redevelopment was taken away, we haven't had a functional program. We are proposing that we get back into that and recreate the capability of doing urban renewal programs, have a database and a staff that advocates on behalf of the city, solicits in response to inquiries from businesses in advocacy of building our tax base, and activating and funding the economic opportunity zones that were created by the City Council some years ago in seven specific areas, but which have been in suspense due to lack of funding. So we're going to propose $100,000 in each district as seed money, and we believe that it can help cover costs such as permits or fees or other things that might be kind of the borderline between holding a business development back or not, and that at least will be a start in the recreation of a program that was once, in the area, $17 million a year. It'll take a while to get back to that level. Homelessness, two major allocations for adding beds for housing. These are over and above the 40 beds for the women and 40 beds for the men in the mission and homeless shelter as done by previous council action. These would all be beds over and above that. The first is a concept for bridge housing, which is for the people who are not currently allowed into the present shelters. If you have a dog, if you have a spouse, if you're on drugs or alcohol, you're not currently allowed in, therefore, they're permanently outside and the source of annoyance. This is a low-barrier shelter concept. We are following models around the state closely to get best practices, and those people would be allowed in. There would be treatment capability, social workers, hopefully people with medical and/or chemical dependency skills there to offer services to these folks. So their rapid response team will be cleaning up the debris and litter. They will give information out to people about this as an alternate. Some will follow it, some will not, but the hope is that by having available beds and available services over time and with patience and substantial investment, we can get some people out of this circumstance that is currently predominating around the community. We also have $5 million for a longer-term housing project, which could be Bakersfield Homeless Shelter replacement expansion. We would certainly solicit from others proposals before finalizing the exact details of such a decision. And there's $450,000 for contractual services, which would assist the goal of getting some of the homeless off the streets and into a more productive lifestyle. We would solicit proposals from private sector experts and service providers, and then bring back to council those proposals with the appropriate contracts. We have a number of energy efficiency proposals, following the model of converting 13,000 street lights, which was done this last year, which reduces the frequency of having outages and changing the bulbs, which reduces consumption of energy, and which increases lighting. We will have some major programs proposed, Convention Center Arena, and in some of the lighting areas around the city that were not covered by the 13,000 already converted. And we have a number of event and facility upgrades and enhancements, including enhancements to the regional sports complexes. Regional sports complexes, I would argue, add a quality of life issue, they add family entertainment, they add youth-related healthful activities, and they form a model for what Bakersfield is, which is a family-friendly community. They also secondarily serve an economic development purpose by bringing in tournaments and activities from all over the western United States. The expansion of them will allow for increased enhancement of that. The two proposed allocations for the five quarters of the two fiscal years, 14 and a half and $56,500,000, per total of just under $71 million. We have left about $1.5 million unallocated for future discussion or future action and The combined allocations for the five quarters, you can see that police was the largest priority of constituents during the passage of the ballot measure, and they are scheduled to get the largest proportion of the money, followed closely by parks and recreation, homelessness, and fiscal stability. And then you can see on this chart that all of the priorities are being addressed in some form. Those that are capital-intensive tend to get larger allocations. Over time, the, as the police staffing and fire staffing grows in the two- or three-year planning period, there'll be more money going into the staffing and ongoing costs and somewhat less available for capital allocations. So we're hoping in these early years to make as much progress on needed capital allocations as possible. And then this is a chart by only the proposed 1920 allocations, and you can see there that police is in for 36% development services, which is combined homelessness and economic development, 26%, parks and rec, 22%, and so on. By the way, the total, I promised during the outreach campaign that the total amount going to CalPERS in the first year would be under 13%. It is 6%. Assistant City Manager Chris Hewat is going to talk about some of the specifics of the first three allocations.
Good evening, once again, Honorable Mayor and Council, Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. So what I'm going to walk you through this evening is regarding the action items that are on your agenda for consideration. What Mr. Tandy went over was a snapshot of the entire program for the five quarters as proposed currently and as being reviewed currently by the Citizens Oversight Committee. What I'm going to talk to you a little bit about is kind of the foundational aspects of the programs we're looking to kickstart come July 1, when the new fiscal year starts, and how we roll those services and programs out quickly and efficiently come July 1. And the way we do that is to allocate new revenue in the current year, that will be received in the current year, to purchase things such as vehicles and to upgrade certain facilities, again, to be prepared when July 1 comes to start providing those services, or in a case that we'll show you, have a facility that is ready to go to start to accept and train new police officers as part of the three-year program. We're also going to talk to you a little bit about a one-time opportunity to take advantage of a methodology to actually reduce retirement costs. And again, that decision to do that must be made prior to July 1 or well in advance of July 1, so staff has time to prepare for that. So I'm just going to go over a few things in detail. You've seen this once already. What I'm going to be talking to you tonight again about is this $14.5 million that the city anticipates in new revenue through the measure. city anticipates in new revenue through the measure in the current fiscal year. So, that is, again, the three allocations tie back to that amount in this fiscal year. So, to break the three allocations that staff is proposing down, $900,000 to begin the retrofit of an existing city-owned building for a standalone police academy and training facility, looking to acquire several pieces of equipment early for various departments. So, again, come July 1, the vehicles and that equipment will be ready to go once the positions are filled, and there's no lag time that would otherwise exist if we had to start procuring vehicles after July 1. And then, again, that fiscal stability item, as we've talked about, to essentially eliminate interest payments, increase general fund reserves, and ultimately reduce cost to the retirement system. The chart to your right is a breakdown by percentage of where this money would be allocated. So, again, about 83% is going to that one-time opportunity, 6% to the facility for the police department, and then the early acquisitions vehicles make up about 11%. Going to get into the three allocations in slightly more detail. As we talked about, the measure-spending priorities really drive every one of these proposals that's before you. So, this first one is the allocation for the Police Department Academy and Advanced Training Facility in the amount of $900,000. And as we talked about earlier, that meets about seven of the measure-spending priorities, big picture, to be able to train and then provide ongoing and continual training to sworn officers. So, the city is now the owner of this building that you may recognize at 4646 California. Through a process that we went through with the Thomas Rose Improvement Program and the Centennial Corridor Right-Away Acquisition Program, the city became owner of this facility. And evaluating opportunities for the land and for the improvements, the concept of retrofitting and rehabbing it to make it an academy and advanced training facility for the police department came to mind, and after further evaluation by several departments with the lead of the police department, we feel this facility is optimal for this type of use. The city currently does not have its own training facility. The chief can speak a little bit more about feedback from Post and what other cities are doing as far as training facilities. But, in essence, the hiring that we're expecting to do under this program in the next several years, as well as the normal attrition in the department for sworn officers, really exceeds capacity that we have in some of the shared academies and facilities that we've been using otherwise for many years. On top of that, right now, for advanced training ongoing throughout the year, in a lot of cases, we're sending staff to other cities at the cost of hotels and meals and travel, and this facility would be able to house several advanced training ongoing courses throughout the year that, again, would save dollars, and we would be able to reallocate those dollars elsewhere in the department and in the organization. We do, the reason why we're asking for the accelerated process for this facility and starting the remodel is because we're anticipating that academy that would include the 43 sworn positions previously shown will start in August, and so time is of the essence to essentially take what you see on that bottom picture, which is a nice-themed restaurant, to a post-certified police academy, which will take some time and some effort, and we do believe we can do it in the timeframe that we need to do it, but it will take essentially a green light soon to get that process started. The second item that I'm talking to you about tonight is what we're calling the acceleration of the community priorities. So, Mr. Tandy touched upon several items regarding the rapid-response teams, regarding some increases to the fire department staffing, that you'll get more information on as we move forward in this process. All of those positions require equipment, some of it specialized, some of it's a little more pickup trucks and the like that can be acquired a little bit quicker. But regardless, all that would take months or more to get acquired if we wait till July 1, meaning if we hired individuals in, say, August, we would not have probably the equipment available for them at that time, so we'd have filled positions, but no means to really deploy them in a meaningful way. In this case, what we're asking for is an allocation and appropriation to begin the purchase of those vehicles. So, again, they're ready right after July 1. Those positions are filled, they hit the streets. The amount that we're estimating necessary for this is about $1.58 million, and, again, it all ties back to several of these priorities that we've outlined for you. A little bit more detail, the proposal for this item is about 20 vehicles. You can see how they're broken down there by department. So, the police department, the Impact Unit, which deals with a lot of quality-of-life issues, homelessness, looking to acquire a couple different pickup trucks, animal control, calls-for-service continue to increase on the animal control side of things. This would allow, again, those animal control officers that are part of this proposal to, again, hit the ground running after July 1. I won't go through every one of these departments. If you do have questions, we can walk through them. But essentially, each piece of equipment here has been reviewed in detail by the departments in relationship to the priorities and the staffing that we're looking to add to enhance services to the community, and we feel that this investment here is a worthy one now to, again, be able to move forward immediately to show the enhanced levels of service come July 1. There's a small little footnote in the bottom-left-hand corner in the screen. We're still getting used to the new screens here, so I didn't mean to make it that small. But what it does say is essentially that there's some contingency built into the budgets that'll be coming before you for fiscal year 1920 under the measure that include equivalent costs for this equipment. So, for instance, if there is not approval of this item, this one item, staff is prepared to purchase those vehicles starting July 1, essentially, if the early acquisition in this allocation is not available to staff. So, the final item is the larger dollar amount. Out of the three, it's $12 million, and this is an item that has several different positive components to it. It really is meant to address the fiscal stability of the city, and I will talk to you a little bit more in detail about this. This action will save the taxpayers an estimated $8.7 million over a seven-year period, and it all has to do with the way and the methodology in which the city pays its retirement costs. It also increases reserves for the city, which are currently below levels that are recommended by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, and Mr. Smith has provided some information that's included in your packet, which goes into a lot more detail on current standards nationwide and where we're at and where we need to really be. But this would be a one-time infusion of cash into reserves, which would allow the city to change the method in which it pays CalPERS on the annual basis for the unfunded liability portion of its payments, meaning, right now, we're paying monthly, we're incurring -- because we do not have the cash on hand at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, we're incurring a 7% interest charge. If we went to a monthly payment, or we went to a yearly payment, excuse me, an upfront lump-sum payment, which we could do, if the dollars were there, we would save, I think in the current year, a little over $800,000 at stair steps, and then, again, over that seven-year period totals $8.7 million. It's important to note that this, again, is a one-time infusion, meaning that the money is paid upfront throughout the year, the reserve is replenished, and it's available, again, the next year for that upfront payment. It does need to occur. This action, and staff must have direction prior to July 1, essentially to prepare to select this option. It does also help in bond ratings, should that be necessary in the future, and it will also allow staff, or allow the city, excuse me, to have more cash on hand in case of an unanticipated event. Wrapping up, the Citizens Oversight Committee has met twice to review the 1819 allocations that are before you this evening, and they've started to review the detail of the 1920 allocations. We've provided you a snapshot. They're digging into the weeds, so to speak, right now. Their next meeting is next Monday evening. During their last meeting, a majority of the committee found that all three of the 201819 allocation proposals that I just talked about are consistent with those priorities outlined in the measure, and took action to confirm that. Again, as I mentioned, they will have some upcoming meetings to continue to review the proposals in detail for the next fiscal year. So, the next steps, staff is asking for several different actions tonight. First and foremost, approval of the three allocations to begin to address some of these items immediately, requesting waivers of normal bid requirements due to the timing related to the academy facility work. There's also an agreement with a contractor for your consideration that would allow for that work of the design and demolition that's necessary to begin immediately. And then, as Mr. Tandy mentioned, we're going to be bringing back the full package and suite of proposals to you for fiscal year 1920 upon conclusion of the review by the Citizens Oversight Committee. So, with that, that ends my comments. I'm available for questions, as are Mr. Smith, Mr. Tandy, and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, if you can come on back here for a sec. And I'm going to kind of work my way backwards from where you ended and go to the beginning of the presentation. There was a little bit of confusion in the community when it was first rolled out or came out in a paper, excuse me, regarding prepaying some PERS costs on that. So, if I put the analogy out there that if you have a home loan, you have a 30-year mortgage on the house, and you make your payments early, and you reduce your interest rate by doing that, we're basically going to do the same thing, correct?
It's essentially like paying off your credit card before the interest charges come due, essentially. Yeah.
Very good. With the low-barrier facility, I talked to the city manager about this, too. I'm in favor of it. But one thing that I would ask, that we have some sort of emphasis on transportation, if we, you know, help the collaborative somehow with vans or trailers. I know when homeless are out in my area and they're seven miles from the nearest resources, it's just impossible for them to get down there, and even if we make contact via code enforcement or flood ministries, just getting them to the resources that they need can be very arduous. Police jobs, been some conversation about that. I would ask that, and I just checked before I came into the council meeting, that the Post website, that police jobs are posted on that, also in Porec Magazine and CNOA Magazine, which are both law enforcement publications, that we have something in those , too. And the last item, the police academy training facility. You know, at some point, when this is up and running, maybe we can look at it for other opportunities, too, as a regional training facility for law enforcement, possibly for HIDA or CNOA training, I think that, or other statewide training, I think that could add gravitas to our city and the police department. And I thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions?
Yes? Didn't show up.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hewat, have you done even a quick and dirty analysis of the economic benefit, call it return on investment of the $900,000? You've not talked about a lot of savings. It seems to me that this one would have been a perfect example of saying, hey, we're going to spend $900,000, and we're going to save this much money every year, not sending people all over the countryside for training and housing and food. This is an example of the type of thing in the future I would like to see, but have you got any ballpark idea on what you might save from? I mean, $900,000 is not a lot of money, but I wondered, you save $90,000 a year?
Councilmember Freeman, we can't deliver the hires, the 43 sworn and those who leave through attrition without the facility. I can tell you that we examined other leased or purchased facilities around town, looking for the specific criteria that meet Post requirements. We thought we'd landed on one. It took a couple of months to negotiate the lease, and during the couple of months of negotiations, there was $700,000 in damages done to the structure by the homeless. That wasn't our loss, because we hadn't executed the lease, but there was a comparative effort made. Chief, you would have to address, I know that you are planning on regional training and other issues like that, if you have a ballpark number on the savings.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we send several hundred officers out of town every year for training, depending upon what type of training, those types of things. When you're looking at the 43 new positions plus the attrition, those folks are also going to have to be trained, because other people will move up within the organization. So, there's specialized training as required by Post, whether you're a sergeant, so you have to go to supervisor school. If you move into management, you have to go to management school. All of those types of things are costs that we have to incur. I don't have the exact figures for that, but going to Councilmember Parlier's point, over the last six to eight years, California Post has recommended that we have our own facility as a regional training facility. Sheriff's Department typically, in their facility, is just for academies, but when this facility's up and running, we'll be able to, what we call, host trainings. So, folks from anywhere in the state can come to our facility, get training, depending upon how many bodies are in that training, then our training becomes free. So, we get free seats in the actual training, and someone else basically ends up paying for it. So, this is a win-win, if you will, but to put the actual dollar amount to it, I'd have to go back and look at all the numbers over the last, to give you what you'd be looking for over the last five years, so I could kind of give you a true trend or analysis.
I'm not really arguing that it's not a good idea.
No, no.
I think you might find you have an incredible return on investment. That's why, I think it'd be worth going back, and you don't have to have this next week, but I think for your own benefit, you might go back and say, well, what's the real potential here? Because I think it'll turn out to be quite a good investment. My other question is, you know, when we do things quickly and try to put together a budget, somebody came up with $900,000. I don't know if that really, I can't believe it's fully bid out, because we usually miss our budgets. I mean, my background's construction, and seldom when we have to put a budget together very quickly, you know, we usually go over the budget. So, I mean, if we did, we did. At this point, it's probably a little too late, but I hope this won't look like a, is this the old El Dorito or something? I mean, I hope it won't look, I hope it's going to look like a professional police academy when we're done. And if that took an extra $50,000, that's okay with me. I don't think it ought to look like an old Mexican restaurant. It needs to look professional, and if we're going to do it, let's do a first-rate training facility that we're all proud of, so.
We will get there. That's a little bit out of my wheelhouse. I'll leave that to Mr. Fidler. I won't ask him to investigate burglaries, and he's not asked me to do construction.
Okay, Mr. Fidler, then. This is going to look like a professional police academy.
Councilmember Freeman, we are going to do a significant amount of work within the area to convert it as much as possible. We are stuck with the structure itself, so it is what it is. We're not going to go out there and remodel the whole facade of that facility, but we will do our best efforts to make sure it meets all the needs of the Post trainings' standards and also be a first-class facility for them to work out of.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other colleagues? There you are. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for all the hard work. I know that my colleagues and I really appreciate it, and I just want to also commend you for your commitment to the spending priorities that were outlined to the voters when we proposed Measure N. There have been many comments in the community about what we might do with N dollars, but in fact, we are maintaining our commitment. Just wanted to highlight some of those thoughts. You know, folks in the community claimed that all these dollars were going to go to CalPERS, but in fact, in this proposed budget, only 6% of those dollars will go towards that. They said that no money was going to go to police, but in fact, 30% of the budget is going to police. They said that we were using homelessness as a way to campaign for N, but in fact, we're investing $11 million in homelessness. And, I mean, those items -- And I mean, those items are significant, and it will add immediate benefits to the community. And so I appreciate staff's commitment and their hard work throughout the last few months. And God bless you over the next few months further, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned. It's exciting times, and we're able to move forward on what we know have been problems for quite some time and not been able to deal with, and now we're able to deal with them substantially. And it takes a while to gear up, and it takes a while to really address things, but it is very exciting to be able to do it. So thank you and thank the community.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to accept staff recommendation, including the pre-allocations and a waiver of the bidding requirement.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor statements.
I don't see any from my colleagues. Mr. Tandy spoke considerably about homelessness, and homelessness is the paramount issue facing California cities. He mentioned the 50 percent increase in homelessness. We want to thank the community for coming out to help us count. It was reported, I think, 49 percent increase, but I think it was really a math mistake. It was 100 percent. We doubled the number of people who were able to go out there and count. And counting our homeless persons is very, very important. Today, I was able to go to Sacramento to meet with Governor Newsom along with the mayors of the 11 largest cities in California, and we were able to advocate again for funding. We talked about the critical nature of homelessness in all our communities and advocated for additional funding. Last year, we had 500 million set aside for the 11 largest cities. From what the governor said, I believe it's going to, he certainly took interest in the comments we had, and he left with a comment saying, I'm going to make some adjustments based upon what was said today. We talked about prevention funding and the need for that also, in addition to what we're already doing, but be able to provide preventative services, maybe not having people who already have housing in, in housing wherever, not be able to continue paying their rent, and oftentimes, they become homeless for that reason. Also, we talked about SEQA and the impact on housing and the need for SEQA reform so that we can get low-income housing up there quickly. We talked about mental health and the implications of some of the changes that have gone on in past years and the desperate need for us to make sure that the mental health, persons afflicted with mental health or battling mental health, that we're able to be able to get them services even when they don't understand that they need services and that services can be helpful. I was very, very encouraged, as were the other mayors, and we look forward to that. And thank you so much for our community's investment in homelessness. We are our brother's keeper, and we are doing something about it. It impacts not only homeless persons, but the quality of life. And so I am optimistic now that the quality of life for all of our community because of our efforts and the efforts statewide will be improved. So thank you all for being here. Students, you hung in there, BC, CSUV, thank you very much, and for all of you engaging in the civic process, thank you so much. We are adjourned at 6:52.